Okay. Porter Trustee, July 20th work session meeting, first item is election presentations. Crystal?
Thank you. All right. So, Crystal Aker Town Clerk. So, in 2021, the town of Wellington is going to be doing a special election. On that ballot, there's going to be two yes or no questions. One allowing for the sale of medical and retail marijuana, and one imposing a retail marijuana sales tax. So, Title 31 allows three different forms of elections for municipality to hold, one of those being a mail ballot election. A mail ballot election, ballots are sent out mailed out to active registered voters. There will be at least one mail ballot drop off location, which will be designated most likely at Town Hall. And those ballots can also be returned by mail. The election is held over several days, so the ballots are mailed out 22 days prior to the election and can be submitted anytime up to 7:00 PM on Election Day. As I previously said, all active voters are automatically mailed a ballot. And the election also includes Yowakawa Voters, which are the overseas voters. Absentee ballots are available to persons not at the address during the time the ballots are mailed. And there is a signature verification process that is completed once those ballots are returned. The next form of an election is a polling place election. This is done at one or more designated locations. It's held on one day, and the election is open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It is done by in-person voting, and all registered electors can participate in that election. There's a minimum of three election judges that will run the election. Absentee ballots are available. This also does include the Yowakawa Overseas ballots. And the ballots are counted after the polls are closed for the day. The third form of an election is a coordinated election. So, this would be several entities throughout the county that would be holding an election on the same day. And that can be, that's coordinated through the Limerick County Clerk's Office. So, they, the Clerk's Office conducts the election on behalf of all the entities. And it's held as a mail ballot election. Some of the requirements, the municipality is required to sign an IGA with the county, which outlines the duties of what, duties of the entities. And the municipality would pay for those election services. So, as referenced in the mail ballot slide, the active registered voters. So, an active registered voter, they become inactive if mail has been returned from the county. And when a ballot or official mail is returned to the county, there's a card that's sent to them to confirm, to confirm their address. And if that is not returned, then that voter remains inactive. An inactive voter can change their status to active again by updating their registration or completing and signing the verification card that's sent to them. So, voter turnout has increased in municipalities that have transitioned from a polling place election to a mail ballot election. Some of the municipalities in the region, Windsor had an increase of 12% when they went from a polling place to a mail ballot election. Platteville also had an increase of 12%. And Wellington had an increase of almost 11% when they went to a mail ballot election. Some of the costs associated with the election, in 2018, when Wellington held a polling place election, the cost was $6,800. The per voter cost of that was $14.78. 2020, the mail ballot election was $10,683 with a per voter cost of $9.03. So, some of the estimated costs for the 2021 election. The mail ballot is 18,000 to 20,000. The estimated polling place election is 8,000 to 10,000. And the estimated coordinated election cost is 4,500 to a little over 13,000. The coordinated election costs are really hard to determine. It's based on what entities are going to be participating within that election. The school districts hold odd year elections, so they may be part of that coordinated election, but that won't be determined until ballot certification on September 3rd. And then the last few slides are some key dates for the different types of elections. There is a lot of dates that remain the same throughout the different elections, such as the campaign finance reports, the Tabor notices, and the mail ballot elections. Those dates where you can mail them out are the same as well. So, I'm available for whatever questions you have.
Any questions?
Well, go ahead, Mr. Gator.
Okay. So, I thank you, Crystal, for putting together all the numbers, especially the costs. I know, just from a cost standpoint, obviously, the polling place election is a lot less expensive than the mail-in option. And then with the coordinated, we just don't know where that's going to wind up. One of the questions I do have is, do we have the ability with doing a polling place election to allow people to do an absentee ballot for any reason? Or is that limited only to military or overseas?
Applications for mail ballots or for polling place elections. August 4th, individuals can start applying for an absentee ballot.
Okay. And we can allow that for pretty much any reason. So, if someone just doesn't feel comfortable coming in person to vote, we can give, there is a way that they can just request an absentee ballot, not a problem?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have is, I know that there's a fairly high jump from the estimated cost from the mail-in election of 2020 to this year. What are some of the thought process behind the increase of that cost from what it was previously?
We got a quote from Sea Change. They are a reputable election service company. They've sent out over 17 million optical scan ballots, so they have the production of the ballot packets and the distribution's down pretty well.
Okay.
For the coordinated election, does that include in-person polling places and mailed ballots?
So, the county does hold voter service centers, so there are specific locations for individuals that do want to vote in person instead of holding, instead of submitting a mail ballot.
Okay. So, both, that's for the coordinated.
For coordinated.
Yeah. Both options would be available. And we typically, from my memory, have had polling locations for coordinated elections in Wellington in the past. I think River of Life usually hosts those, if I remember correctly.
River of Life.
Yeah. So, maybe that's a big assumption that that would happen again, as it has, but, but I think that's.
Well, don't they do it for Limerick County like, you know?
I feel like they do. I think I've remembered it several years now.
A lot of times, they return back to the same facility, so I can double check on that to see where they're going to be located.
Where I go every time. Yeah, yeah. We've set something up here in the past, too.
Yeah. I'm curious. I think that would be good information to have. And I don't know if they determine that early enough before we need to make a decision, but it would be nice to ensure that there was a polling location if we were to do a coordinated election in Wellington.
And, and I think there was, I think Dan might have mentioned this, that we can do a coordinated election and a polling place election. Is that correct?
I believe we would do, choose one or the other, but a coordinated election could occur at the same time that a polling place election would happen. So, if the county were holding an election, as a coordinated election, there would be a voter service center here in Wellington for the county's election, but then the polling place for Wellington would be separate from that.
That seems confusing.
That's, that's exactly my thoughts, too.
Yeah, there's no reason to do that.
But they could be held at the same time. We, Wellington's could be totally separate from that coordinated election.
So, just to be clear, if we did the top option, mail ballot, just an order, the top option, mail ballot election, there would be a ballot to return in addition to the county's or the coordinated ballot that would have to be returned. So, people who would be voting on county, school district, those items would return a ballot separate of those for Wellington items. Two ballots, two same timeline. Okay. That does seem confusing to me as well.
Yeah. And so, if the county, if, if we did a coordinated election with the county, is, is that always mail-in, or is it a come-to-nation? I'm a little puzzled.
In 2013, the state went to all mail-in ballots.
Okay.
No polling place?
They do, they do mail-in ballots, but they do have the option for the voter service centers for people to go in and do, submit a ballot.
Yes. I think everyone gets mailed your ballot, and then you can still choose, like, go in somewhere and vote it there if you wanted to.
Just to be super clear, too, because I talked about the mail ballot, but the whole polling place election, if we were to do the second option here, a polling place election, then our polling place would be different than that of the coordinated election.
That's correct.
So, people who are voting in person would have to go to two different voting locations.
That's correct.
In order to vote on both Wellington items and those for the county, school district, or anybody else in the coordinated election.
You know, my sense, having looked at some of this stuff, is that, I mean, I think doing, unless we feel we're going to get in a position where something changes on our ballot, and I think then we're on the cost for reprinting the county's ballots.
We don't want that.
I, I know, which I think we've looked at before and decided. But I think having it all consolidated in one ballot, I mean, if you have two places to go and two pieces of paper, because one of the things that happens is if you put both ballots in the same envelope, they're invalidated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, and that, again, I would suggest, you know, my view is, whatever seems to be the least confusing seems to be reasonable to me. And it does look like the, you know, a coordinated election has the earliest filing deadlines, too. I think it looks like July 23rd is, I think they're the, they're the August 4th and September 18th. So, it sounds like, that's probably because it has the county involved, and we got to get the IGA with them sorted out, like, one more step.
Yes, the IGA would need to be done by August 24th.
Any comments? Do we know how many items are going to be on the county's ballot? Have you heard? I mean, do they have anything? I haven't heard anything about the county. Haven't, but the school board apparently has something coming up.
So, all the school districts within Limerick County will have an election this year. If there are enough candidates to fill vacant seats, they can cancel the election. I did talk to Limerick County today, and they have had conversations with Windsor and Loveland. So, there's a possibility that they will be on the ballot, but they're not certain yet.
Okay.
Does Limerick County themselves have items on the ballot, or is it just the school districts?
They don't know if they're, if the state or the county is going to have anything on the ballot yet.
Okay.
What happens if they don't have anything on the ballot?
The cost increases.
Uh huh. We don't know that.
At least one with the state, for sure.
Yeah.
So, looking at the timelines here, and this being a work session, it says July 23rd, which looks like three days from now to do a coordinated election. Does this take any action by the board? Because we can take no action tonight.
Correct. If a governing body has taken action to decide to coordinate with the county, then we needed to let them know by July 23rd. But since we have not, the next deadline is August 24th with the IGA.
Okay. So, we, we are not required to do anything in the next three days. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Might there be more information on what else might be on the ballot with, after those three days?
We might have more information after August 24th, but really, once September 3rd hits and the ballot content is certified, we'll know who exactly is all going to be on the ballot then.
And your range here, it's a, it's a big range, so 4,500 to 13,000. Is that considering best and worst case scenario, or could it get much worse?
That was the estimates that the county sent me.
Okay.
They gave me estimates if the state and the county wasn't on the ballot to if they were going to be on the ballot. And there was a lot of entities, as far as school districts, special districts, different municipalities that were included with that estimate. So, it just depends on who's all going to be involved.
Okay. So, I think this range, though, is probably reliable then, based on more or less.
It's as close as they can get at this point.
Okay. Yeah. I think that's, that sounds, that makes me feel a little bit better. I was like.
Yeah, 13 being the work.
Yeah.
So, kind of to follow that question, if we're going to sign an IGA with the county, do we get to put a max cap on that number? Or is it a, they could charge, give us a bill for 90 grand, and we're stuck paying it?
We.
Theoretically.
I don't know of them putting a max cap on that. You know, last year, it was a pretty high number that they originally estimated us when we were talking about this initiative. When it came down to it, it was significantly lower.
Okay.
So, I think it started off 70,000 and went down to about 25.
Okay. That's just concerning that we don't have a guarantee that if we do say we're going to go with the county. I, I agree with Trustee Whitehouse. It's much less confusing to just have one election, so I get that. But at the same time, we do need to be cognizant. We are spending taxpayer dollars here, so we need to be cognizant that we're not, I mean, yeah, if it's $10,000 versus $9,000 polling place election, that's no big deal. But if it comes in at 15, 18, 20 grand that we end up having to pay the county, and we thought it was going to be 12, we can't go back and say, well, actually, we changed our minds.
Correct.
And that's concerning to me, is that basically, it takes it out of our hands. We're, we're at a guessing game. It's, we're playing hope.
That's a bit of a gamble.
I don't like gambling with taxpayer dollars.
Well, but they told you 13, reliable, top end?
That's their best estimate.
Based on what they see coming to the ballot?
Based on previous years.
Previous years.
Mm-hmm. In having that conversation with Doreen today, she, you know, that was what she told me, that was her best estimate. After September 4th, when they have the ballot certified, they'll send me another estimate. And then after they receive all of their costs and bills from the election, then we'll receive our bill probably late November.
Well, I personally like going the coordinated effort if we're not going it alone, right? There's no reason to send our stuff out to everybody if they're not doing anything.
I think as, as people who represent the folks of Wellington, it's our duty to make sure that access to voting and convenience, less confusion. I feel like that's, that's our responsibility to make sure that as many people can participate as possible, and it's proven that that's the best way to do it. So, and given the cost here, I, I feel like we're potentially getting a pretty good discount because we're getting mail ballot and polling place, essentially, combined value, if you were to look at it that way, for less money. There is a risk, of course, of how much it could actually be, but they would know the estimates the best of anybody. So, I mean, I feel like we got to trust in that.
That cost with the county is materials and staff time.
Okay.
The other two costs are for mail ballot and polling place are materials.
Yeah. So, we're not even considering the, a lot of staff time for our town staff that would be responsible for both of those items as well. So, maybe even more, much more significant value, if you were to think of it in that way, to the taxpayers.
I would agree with you, Trustee Kenny, because the county has more resources available to handle an election. And something that's this important to our community that they're passionate about, I believe that it is our most important duty here to ensure that voting is as easy and accessible as possible. So, Crystal, what, how, how much time would you estimate does it take to coordinate an election?
To coordinate an election, it doesn't take near as much time as it does to prepare for a mail ballot election. We send our content to them. We send our information for the Tabor notice to the county, and then they facilitate everything after that. We do take in any campaign finance reports. For a mail ballot election, we prepare all the envelopes, ballots, send them out. You know, staff and election judge time to pick up the ballots every day, to process the ballots when they come in from 7:00 to 7:00 on Election Day. So, there, it is a lot more labor intensive to do a mail ballot. It's definitely doable. But with the coordinated, they take on a lot of those efforts.
Well, and with all of the projects that we've got going on currently, I think that, you know, there's a lot of value in utilizing the county's resources to handle this election, so that our staff can continue to focus with their projects and not lose momentum.
Well, this was one of the projects that is budgeted into the budget for both costing and for staff time for this year. So, I understand that we have a lot on the table, but this is also something that our staff needs to be able to handle.
I don't doubt that they can't handle it. I just think that right now, with such high priority issues, like figuring out if the marijuana tax is passed, how to manage that revenue and track it, in addition to some of the very intensive water projects we've got going on, and with the utility hardship assistance and other COVID-related items coming down the pipe, I just really feel like taking a break from those projects that they've got a bunch of momentum on, interrupting that to coordinate an election and then trying to pick that back up, it, it's almost a disservice to the community.
Are these projects that the Clerk's Office is handling with the COVID relief and other things? I thought those were financed in administration.
It takes a village to run a community.
I understand, but the election's run by the Clerk's Office, not by the entire town staff?
There is, you know, other staff within the, that do help with picking up ballots or watching the front desk, so other people can go pick up ballots. I've talked with Judy about getting some numbers for tax information, so we do work together a lot on some of those issues. I mean.
Okay. So, our next step here, just to sit and wait?
We can, I can go to the county, get that IGA, and we can bring that to you guys on August 10th, if you want to move forward with that. Or we can do a resolution to determine a polling place or mail ballot election on August 10th.
I'd like for the IGA to be prepared for us to consider. I don't think there's any reason to wait on that. If there's not any significant costs associated with it, we can decide whether or not we're doing it, of course, as needed, in front of the community with community comment. But to not have that available and ready, I think would be concerning for the timeline. So, my suggestion, if anybody would agree, would be to make sure that that's prepared for that meeting. So, if we were to take action, we would be able to move forward.
Okay.
I don't know. What else? What everybody else thinks. Being prepared is not going to hurt anybody at that point.
I think it's, I think that's a reasonable, reasonable way forward.
And then at the August 10th meeting, we would then, at that point, either vote to do a mail ballot, a polling place, or do the coordinated and move forward with the IGA?
Would we have the information we need for that by then?
We kind of have to.
We're going to have, we're going to have some cost estimates, because that's really the big deal.
So, the cost estimates, you guys keep coming back to the cost estimates, and it is the best guess. We don't know. It could be, like Trustee Gator said, could be $25,000. We won't know, and we have no idea of knowing. That's just the way Limerick County runs their elections. It's, Limerick County, and, and kind of how I've looked at it, and especially working with Crystal, who, who I know can run a mail ballot election. I've watched her do it when I was in Windsor. She's done, she does, does it very well. The one, the difference between running our own mail ballot election and a coordinated election is the county has, this is all they do. They have an elections department, and this is all they do, and they do it well. It is a streamlined, efficient process, where if we're doing it, we're calling in election judges who may have never worked an election before. We're having to teach them how to look at the ballots. We're having to teach them how to do the voter, the signature verification. We're having to rent equipment to count the ballots, making sure that equipment is, you know, works correctly, and it's counting correctly. There's just a lot of different pieces involved when we hold our own mail ballot election. Can we do it? Absolutely. Is it the best way to go? I mean, that's up to you all to decide. But from, as a former clerk and your now-town administrator, the coordinated election is, is a much more secure and efficient process than doing it in-house.
Refresh our memory. How much do we budget?
There's 55,000 in the elections budget for 2020.
We budgeted that much?
Thought we might have two elections this year, because we knew we had the one in November, but there was the potential the legalization could have come earlier this year, but it never did. So, we had budgeted for two.
Okay. It's important to know. I guess we'll wait till August 10th.
Yeah. So, what I understand from you is we'll bring to you the IGA with a memo with, with an IGA with those cost estimates as well, that usually comes with the IGA, and it's included as one package. Is that what you want?
Can we please find out if there's a way to put a max limit on what we can wind up having to pay out of that IGA?
We can ask. I have asked that before, but we will ask again.
Ask again. I appreciate it.
It does not hurt.
Well, I mean, the, the, I mean, we keep circling back to cost, and while cost is important. I mean, we saw that voter turnout increased with the mail-in ballot, and I think, I think that's what we want. I would say we should be, we, having more engagement is what we've always been talking about, right?
That's right.
So, having a mail-in ballot seems to encourage that, and having another type of polling place seems to discourage it. It seems like we'd be going backwards if we're supposed to be, if we're saying we want more citizens' engagement. I don't know why we'd go backwards, if that's just, and, and again, is there some cost to that? Sure. And I, I think, you know, in this situation, I think it's certainly of value. Now, do I want to see a $100,000 tab from the county?
No.
No, I don't. I mean, I don't, it doesn't sound like it'll be, but I think it's this kind of a municipal burden for trying to, this is, I think it's part of doing business, is my opinion, but.
I think we'd file a protest of some sort, stage a coup.
Okay. We'll wait till August 10th.
Yep.
Come back with information.
Thank you for all the information.
You bet.
Yes, thank you. It was very good to have all that together.
Moving on with it. That's good. Item two, discussion of eligibility requirements and funding for potential utility hardship assistance.
So, inside your packet, you have a draft application for this, and so, just wanted to run through this. You'll see, obviously, a final version when we put it in a packet to be voted on. But as staff, as we have moved through this, there are definitely a number of programs out there. Most of them are predicated on meeting income. So, about a year ago, before I came here and I was researching, depending on if you're an owner or you're a renter, our threshold for meeting income for Wellington is about 15,000 to 20,000 dollars above that. And so, immediately, that disqualifies many of our people. And so, we have spent months and months, myself, I called Sunday, talked to, I mean, for about four hours, just trying to let people know you're going to be scheduled for a disconnect. We hear lots of different stories. This program that we're suggesting is certainly not meant to replace any of the programs. Dan's going to later share with you some things that we think may be coming down in the fall that would be ready for 2022. But this is something that we would suggest is going to supplement. So, a hardship for, is not defined the same as everybody. So, depending on your situation, you do your tax return, and if that's the only thing I have to judge you off of, 12 years or 12 months is a very long time. Things can happen in your life. You could have a car accident. You could have reduced hours in your job. People go through divorces. We had a family that had a fire. So, just a multitude of different things could happen. And so, what we're proposing here is this application, and thank you very much to our attorney. He helped us go through this. We're trying to put staff in a position where they can go down the checklist and say yes or no. And this would be just simply, you know, and we're, we don't want staff to go through and qualify any of it. So, if I say my hardship is this, I am just asking for some type of documentation that that you're just going to share with us, and we don't want to keep that. I don't want them, because of open records, be in possession of someone's tax return. I don't want to see their pay stub. I don't want their social security number. I want a form that I'm going to go in. I'm going to talk to these folks. They're going to say, I've had this reduction in hours. I'm only getting 20 hours of work. I'm going to look at a pay stub. I've had this reduction in hours. I'm only getting 20 hours of work. I'm going to look at a pay stub. It's going to say, I'm going to initial off on, yes, that's what they gave me. Yes, this is what they're giving me for documentation and then I'm just going to go through the checklist. And so this would just be something with staff. Again, Crystal, anybody that's in town hall, we all grab the phones. We all work with the, you know, if somebody's up there, if somebody's already on the phone, you know, somebody wants to start a new utility system. So yes, I think Crystal and Michelle helps us a great deal when we get busy upfront. So as staff work through this, we took out some things. We've added some things with the recommendation of our attorney. And so to start with, I would like to say that, you know, our sales tax has been up. Next week I'll share with you the treasures report. But for to start this, we don't know how it's going to go. We we don't know if we'll get a lot of takers, if we won't. But we're suggesting we take about a dollar per person. So we're suggesting that we set aside about $12,000. See how it goes. And then during the budget process that we will be in front of you a lot more. We'll, we'll know, we'll know if we're getting, you know, lots of applications. We'll know if we're not getting many and we'll share that with you. And so the form or the draft application in front of you, this is certainly not anything that we're committed to. It's our recommendation as staff. Again, as I mentioned, Dan reviewed it for us. And then Hallie and I went through some of this very similar when we did the CARES funding. So the first thing is you would have to be a resident utility customer for the town of Wellington. That's very easy for me to verify. I pull up, I look at your Casell account and I know that you have it. One of the other things, and again, if you guys have any things, we can talk about it afterwards, say yes, no, things that you want to add to this. No violations for tampering with meters. We have some folks that we've gone out and turned their water on and it's just kind of boggling to me that two and three days go by and we never hear from them. Well, when the guys go back out, that's because they've turned their own water back on. That does not work well for us. They should not be in our pits. And so we want to say no, no violations for tampering with meters and or pits. The current hardship creating your inability to pay, you have to provide that documentation to us. And again, we're not going to say if your hardship is a medical bill or your hardship is a reduction in hours, whatever it is that you substantiate that to me and I can check that off. Must sign up for water use audit or training provided by the town to help reduce water and consumption waste. Hallie has been working on this and we're proposing that it could be about an hour. You could do it online or maybe we're going to have it. We haven't completely defined how that's going to be. You know, once or twice a month that you have to sign up for this class. So we had one gal that called in and she'd had like 27,000 gallons and kind of didn't see this as a problem. And I'm like, hmm, this is why your utility bill is high. And so maybe just a little bit of the education piece, letting folks know what's normal for a family of two or four, and then some techniques that they can use to save some of the the water. All grants must be applied to the utility account to bring you to a zero balance. If that doesn't happen, I would like them into into an agreement that that would happen in a fairly short period of time. And I put on here two months. And the reason we're coming back to this is some of these people, we started calling in February and I promise you they're almost like my best friend. I call them pretty often. Getting a little too familiar. They say they're going to do something and they don't do it. And so if we're willing to go and meet them partway, then I think that they need to come and make an agreement that they're going to meet us partway. The account must must be kept current and no businesses can be operated out of the home. So those are the things that we came up with as staff. And again, with Dan helping us, we did say the funds will be provided to first come, first qualified, first served basis. And the reason we put that in there was we had some CARES funding people that had come back three and four months later after we were done. And it kind of put us in a pickle because we, it was unfortunate, but the the money was gone. And that's your application must be complete at the time. So I don't want to have a stack over here that I'm waiting for something. When you bring it in, it must be complete and that's when we will say yes or no on it. And the funds will be available until they're exhausted annually, whatever we decide that the appropriated dollar amount. And the maximum amount per year per household would be $300. When we came up with that number, that's about the average of two months. If somebody has gotten behind and we're certainly hoping that someone has reached out, has let us know before, you know, and it it goes back to the same thing when I used to do a lot of financial literacy. Really, if somebody misses that third house payment, they're in a, they're in a bind. If they would have contacted us and you get, you get with somebody before they're 90 days behind, you can usually come up with a strategy to get them caught up. And so that's kind of what we, where we were thinking on that. So looking for feedback before I bring this to the board next week. Thoughts, good, bad, indifferent?
Over here, got anything? Throw it on the side.
The only question I have is, would we actually issue them a check?
No.
Or it would just be basically a credit memo?
Yep, the funds will go directly to their account.
Because I know that was kind of an issue when we did the CARES funding, we had anticipated that it would get people to catch up on their water bills and none of them ever did. They used, must use it for other items.
No, they did. We did about $90,000.
Oh, they did. Okay. I was under the understanding that the water bills kind of just got off lingering.
A home run all the way.
Okay.
The difference with the CARES funding is it very specifically said utilities. And so we had to extend that. So that included their internet.
Right.
If people were working from home, obviously they needed that service and certainly electric. So and we're not the provider of our electric services. So we had to extend that. So that is why you saw some of those checks go out to folks. But the funding that came from us and went into their account absolutely was applied to the town of Wellington's accounts first.
Good.
With that said, this does say utility again, but this is only applicable to town.
Yeah, the resident utility customer of town of Wellington, that's only the services that we provide.
Okay, great.
We can add water in there.
It might, it might make sense to clarify because.
Easy to do, just one word on it.
Question is, we say water, will that limit it if there's an issue with their waste? I don't know why. Well, it's all in one bill, so it wouldn't matter, right? Okay, okay, nevermind. Just answered my own question.
You gotta have a reason for getting behind, right?
Yes, absolutely. But what we're, we're trying to say is your reason may not be the same as my reason. And so.
My reason is probably not the same as your reason. Quite frankly, I am behind one month and I tell you what, you don't want to be there. Pretty high these days. Okay.
Can you tell me more about the business operating out of a house and why, why that's excluded?
Tell it, Dan.
To some extent, that was just a trying to come up with some specific criteria. You know, it's a limited pot of money. So trying to determine who should be served by this and and maybe who shouldn't. And it was an arbitrary decision to add that there. The specific incident that we're thinking of is customers who perhaps have a business operating that home that out of their home that uses excess water shouldn't necessarily be the town's town maybe shouldn't be using this assistance dollars to help that person versus somebody who's simply behind because they shower too much or something like that. So it, there is no specific legal reason to include that or not. That was really just a decision thing of how we could better use these limited resources.
And I think there was a comment and it might have been from Tyler that that could be written off and a resident couldn't write that off on their taxes, but a person who runs a business out of their home could. I'm not familiar with business tax law, so I am just repeating what I've heard.
A little bit, but and I, it's a mixed bag. I really like the idea because I agree. For example, I have family members that manufacture bars and stuff. There's a lot of water involved in that. Those are not people that should be receiving the hardship. But at the same time, someone, obviously I work as well, but technically there's a business operating out of my house because I run, I work for my company out of my house. So technically we would actually violate, well, technically twice because my wife also owns for an accounting company. But that also wouldn't be a situation where if you were to take me out of the picture and have a single woman who runs like an accounting company from home so she can be with her kids, things like that, and she needs the assistance, I wouldn't want that to just automatically disqualify her. The problem is though, when we start getting into details, we say, oh, well, a daycare is but honestly, a daycare uses more water than just, so it's like, where do we say what's okay, what's not? So I don't know if there's, if we can try to find a better way than just a blanket, no businesses, because that gets sticky, but I understand if we start to get specific, it can put us in a bad place too.
Directly meets the other requirement of this checklist is we want really no discretion in the hands of staff. We don't want staff looking at this saying, well, this qualifier, this is a more important reason than this. So we don't want them necessarily waiting businesses for how appropriate that would be for this criteria. It needs to be a yes, no question. But certainly that, like I said, that is not a, wouldn't be a requirement. There's no legal reason that would be in there. I, it was put in simply as we were thinking of yes, no criteria.
And it's a good one because.
And it's a discussion that was also had at the staff level, exactly what you're talking about now, but we decided to.
Is there a way to clarify operation? Because there's, to me, there's a difference because technically a business can operate if a person works out of the home, it's technically considered operating out of the home versus there's a big difference between I running a business out of my house because right, me working at a call center from my house is a big difference than me, you know, doing chiropractic care on clients coming into my house. There's kind of a big difference there. So I don't know if there's a way to just, I agree, I agree, keeping it out of staff. We can look at maybe moving it out later. I'm not a huge fan of it, but I think it needs to be in there because honestly, I don't want to be giving funds out to businesses. I prefer it to be stuck with, kept with residents, but at the same way, let's keep, if we can clean it up, that's great, but maybe we just keep in mind and see if there are a lot of people coming in that are in that situation where it's a single mom operating a business out of her home that really should qualify. Do we?
And it is a resident, you know, the first, the first criteria is residential utility customer. So for instance, a chiropractic office that wouldn't be allowed in a residential zone.
Okay.
So but your business or businesses like yours, also home-based family childcare centers, I believe is what they're called. They are residentially zoned and there are home-based business licenses. So it is, it is challenging. There, you could exclude the no business operates out of the home and leave it at residential utility customer. And then that would still allow people who have home-based businesses.
What if we started it by saying something along the lines of, I don't know, like no Wellington business license or something like that. So which would disqualify, but here's the thing. If it's too restrictive, we can always come back and change it later, correct? And so if we find out that we're, because if we say you have to have a business license, that means that they have to be an entrepreneur. They can't, it's not just technically, you just work from home, which is technically operating out of your house. You don't own the business. You're just working for another company. So you wouldn't fall under that. Whereas you as a sole entrepreneur would have to hold a business license, but potentially in Wellington. That and maybe that would be a way that we can still keep it very black and white for staff. It gives us a little more leeway though, in terms of people potentially working from home.
How about a conditional use? If they've got a conditional use, then they don't qualify because now they've actually come to the town and are saying that their residence is actually a business. That would be very easy to track because we keep track of all the conditional use. And most of them would be high water usage because it'd be typically daycare, home daycares and other businesses that would have other than, you know, the residents that live there coming in and out of the, of the, of the home. Because typically, like, you know, your wife's business, she typically doesn't have people come in and out of the home. She does everything online, but I think that might be the solution. I don't know.
I like that that has a yes, no.
Because yeah, so yes, no, are you under conditional use? Yes.
I think it's required talking with Cody a little bit and maybe see.
Have good records of our conditional uses?
Please say yes.
Cody Bird, planning director. We have great records from the time I started. Prior, prior to Cody starting, the record keeping, I think, is a little bit lax on some of those conditional approvals. What I will say is we don't have a lot of documented conditional uses in residential properties. Those are primarily transitional zone properties or more recently the family childcare homes.
I have a different, if I'd like to provide a different direction. I don't like the business part at all. I don't think it should be in there. So and this is, and this is why. We already say that they're residential users. Check. And we have a maximum. So people who operate businesses out of their home still use their utilities for personal uses too. So if we're estimating the maximum funds that someone could use in a case of hardship, they still use their homes. So to say that a home daycare, for example, if we were to have a another wave or or items where people are primarily working from home, they lose or they have restrictions and they can't watch kids. Their hours are directly impacted. Not, I mean, nobody else could say that more directly. They still live in their home. They're not making as much money. And the amount that's provided to them is still only a residential value of average of two months. So I don't know why we would discourage people from having home daycares or other businesses out of their home. And in a time of right now where there's more remote workers than ever, and that is an ongoing trend, a lot of people are not returning to offices to cause confusion or concern of whether or not they qualify or to ask for help is the last thing that I'd want to do when we're offering hardship help. So I don't think the business piece should be in there whatsoever just because we've already determined the residential users and whatever control on that I think should be sufficient. However, we determine if someone's a residential or commercial user, that should be where that should be solved, not through a hardship application.
Well, trustee Kenny, I have a suggestion relative to that. Because I I see both sides of the argument for operating a business out of the home and the hardship of like an in-home daycare being impacted from a loss of, you know, having clients or kids. So what if we add a criteria in there that if they're, it's, if they can show a hardship and that in-home business or that in-home occupation is can show that it's been impacted by a significant hardship. So if that daycare isn't able to operate, that shows that that's their primary occupation and it impacts their, their income. So that would kind of that maybe finds some balance, but you know, I, I also lean towards the side that the families that have lost their jobs entirely and don't have the opportunity to have a home occupation business should almost be prioritized over. But then I, you know, I want to be careful. We don't get stuck in the rabbit hole of discriminating against anybody. So I don't want to talk about single moms. I don't want to talk about gender or familial status or marital status, you know, all of those discrimination categories. I mean, we have to be really careful that we're looking at those very clearly defined yes, no criteria.
Yeah, I think the home-based business is too arbitrary and I think there's way too much, too many scenarios that we can't plan for with a simple yes and no that would do that. So I, I don't think it's appropriate, to be honest. So I'd like to look into maybe what other ways, but or I honestly, I don't, if someone has a home-based business and they're struggling for hardship and this is to help people with hardship, I don't know why it matters. And if you're giving them money, maybe we can say this money is intended for helping your utility, personal utility payments and put that disclosure on there because if they're using it for tax benefits for their business, that's not our job to do their taxes. So I think we're overreaching on some, on that piece, but the rest of it, I'm, I'm very excited about. I do worry about the just general hardship associated with income regardless of a specific event that occurs as well. That's something else I'd like to talk about.
Have access to other programs.
Okay.
So Larimer County, oh, sorry, Larimer County has quite a few programs. We have them on our website. So if there is someone out there and they meet that 60% medium, they, there's Title 19. I talk to people every single day that they're waiting for a response back for the assistance that they're going to receive. We're trying to do this is kind of the gap. We're trying to find the folks that, again, if you just look at the median income for Wellington, that does not describe most of our folks, depending on if you're, there's a little on the DOLA website. They do a really good job. I haven't looked at 2021. But about a year ago, depending on if you're a renter or an owner, you were about $15,000 above that threshold. So this is meant to supplement that. So if there is, in fact, single moms out there and they're trying to get by, they, we already get the checks from Title 19. We already get the Larimer County calls us to verify. And so they are getting there. We, they are receiving assistance. And so they are getting there. We they are receiving assistance. This is meant for people that have something has changed in their life. And we're trying to supplement what's out there because if I wait for my tax return, I could be a whole year. Has come and gone before I have something to substantiate that I'm at 60% of that median income. So.
Okay, so what I understand, and thank you all for the feedback. This is just what we were looking for. We'll take off the no business operates out of the home. I think just basing it off of that hardship will cover all of that. I mean, let's, let's try this. I think that are you comfortable with a $300? One time. Give that a one time per year, $300 per year and then $12,000 out of our.
What if you paid it back?
It's just a one time thing.
And there's no calculation associated with it determined on the hardship. It's.
No, it's just a flat amount. A flat $300, no matter what.
The money basically goes from the town to the town. It never goes into the hands of the utilities, correct? Okay.
Correct, correct.
That may be a point worth clarifying at some. Some point in this document.
Sure.
People aren't thinking that they're like.
Expecting a check.
Correct.
We're not seeing the checks in the mail.
Well, I just.
Excellent, excellent point.
The question, the question came up here. So it's we.
Absolutely. Yep, we'll do that. And you're comfortable with us pulling $12,000 out of our general fund, our. Our sales tax overage to fund this at this point in time.
Do we have more discussions on late fees? Or are we just sticking with the general fund dollars right now or any other ongoing contributions to the?
Because we have not been collecting late fees for over a year. We really don't know what that's going to generate. So let's give us a year. I think we were going to go this direction to start with. We'll let you know how it's going, you know, whether that's on a monthly or end of year basis, depending on how much it's used. And if we need to come back and ask for more funds or, you know, and we'll definitely talk about it during budget, you know, what what that looks like, you know, some. I can only find things like this in larger municipalities and it is generally income based and they budget, you know. $80,000, but these are communities of, you know, 80,000 people. So it's very different. So we'll just kind of, this is our first stab at it and really excited to be able to roll this out to the community and. You know, let the citizens know that the trustees are trying to help them through these difficult times.
I have a a quick question or a request relative to this, since it is a new program. Could we ask that the people that utilize a program be willing to sign up for like a three or four question survey? That just kind of helps track and monitor the effectiveness of the program?
Absolutely. We can do that. Great idea.
Replace the business one with a provide feedback. No, I'm not willing.
Well, the nice thing about us being in our possession and I don't have to ask Laramo County to change something. So if we want to change the criteria for 2022, as we move through the budget process, we can say to you, this is working well. You know, these are our numbers. We think the number should be this, or we think the 300 was adequate. So we, you know, it's, it's literally came off our printer. We can change it as we see fit. I do have a couple of people that I would, you know, based off of phone calls, I would reach out. One gentleman's been in a horrible car accident. I can't imagine he can't substantiate it. He's going to either give me a medical bill or. A pay stub, something, but I talk to this gentleman pretty often and it really is heart wrenching. Has a whole year gone by? Has his median income defined by the state gone down? He may not be there yet. So those are the things that we can kind of bring you back. Obviously, we can't overshare. But I do know that there are some folks that once we get this in place, that it would be. It if you can give people a hard reset and an opportunity to stay caught up, I think they would take it. Because that's the that's what we hear from people, the frustration they got behind. They don't know how to get caught up. And they just they feel like they can't get there. So.
Yeah. My other thing and request would be that during the training or education portion, that we're definitely providing resources. For other ongoing programs that could help them if it's more of a long term hardship. So.
Absolutely.
The other request I have similar to what Chris, sorry, trustee Kenny had shared is when we're putting the training together, please be very cognizant that we keep it apolitical. I know that there's a lot of programs out there, even though it's about water, it gets into one, don't care which side you're on, one side or the other, let's just keep it out of it. So I don't expect that to come from our staff, but I do want to make sure the request is made that this needs to be something. It's hey, here's some things, here's water. We're not getting political. We're not telling you this or that. You're a bad person or this. Let's just keep it to the facts.
That's why we're doing it internally.
I appreciate.
We have more control that way.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yep, I don't necessarily like the in person training either. If somebody's out of work or just had a car accident, I don't think.
Oh, there'll be options. Some people like to be out. Others will want to do it on Zoom or, you know, watch a recording. Hallie's working on it, you know, she's great and creative with that type of stuff. So I'm sure she'll come up with a great product for us to use. We'll keep you posted.
We're not limiting access to that.
Absolutely not.
Great.
So we will bring this to your next meeting for board approval.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for prioritizing this.
Good program. I'll be talking to you.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Yep, understood.
Okay, Dan.
What did they do to us, Dan?
A lot. Keep it high level, huh? I'm done. I said a lot.
It's over.
Wow, the mayor likes you a lot right now.
Um, so this request came from trustee Gator to come talk about some legislation.
To give correction, I had the initial request, but trustee McDonald was actually the one who suggested doing a full overview. I asked for one law.
And and it's a and it's a good topic and it's definitely something we should plan to to do on a regular basis. This year, there were a lot of pieces of legislation passed in the Colorado General Assembly. Hold on one second. I'm just trying to share my screen. Of course, this is all in your packets. There were 502 bills passed into law in the state of Colorado. That's actually an incredibly high percentage of bills introduced, much higher than last year and much higher than pretty much the last 10 years. So 500 bills, 623 introduced, the town of Wellington would need pretty much a full time lobbyist or two or three to track every bill. I used to do that for a couple of organizations and it's exhausting. So what I tried to do here was take what Colorado Municipal League did, which is track about 60 bills that became law. And narrow it down to the ones that I thought were of particular interest to the town of Wellington. So if there's bills that I don't mention that are mentioned in the packets or maybe that you've heard of, that's because I just. Of the 502, we have to pick and choose a couple. As I go through all of this, I definitely ask that. Ask questions as we go. I'm changing topics very quickly, so I'm going to be off on transportation when you're asking me. By the time you ask a question, so ask as we go. To start this off, a lot of the session and the laws that were passed and the major laws that had impact had to do with taxes and labor. And so I think it's important to talk about that kind of right out of the gate here. Particularly in 2020, the voters repealed the Gallagher amendment. Under the Gallagher amendment, as you probably know, residential properties could make up no more than 45% of the tax base. Which meant that homes were assessed at 71.15% were taxed on their assessment of 71.5% and businesses at 29%. So Gallagher was repealed. So now the question became, how are those percentages actually determined? Prior to now, that was determined by the constitution and they realized after that was repealed that it could just be done by statute. If it can be just done by statute, the general assembly can change those percentages on a whim, and they can also be changed by voter initiatives very quickly. And that led to some interesting finagling at the general assembly. Second important topic was table, table refunds. In June, the legislative council came, which is actually after the session had ended. Legislative council came back with a financial forecast for 21 and 21, 2022, saying that over the next year or two, there will have to be about $1 billion. In Tabor surplus refunds taxpayers in Colorado. So after the general assembly had gone through the entire session, just flush with funds, creating passing all sorts of new laws with fees. With new programs that came out of generals, out of general fund dollars. Then they got this new forecast that said, oh, now you have to refund a billion of those dollars over the next year or two. The March forecast offered said that there will be no refunds. So this is about a billion dollar change in situations after the general assembly had already finished all of its work for the year. This causes a major problem in terms of those refunds because this chart here, somebody came up with a long time ago. And it's really the best way to explain taper refunds. The cash funds, which are the things that the general assembly can impact, and I'll talk about it one bill in a second, that really changed tax fund dollars, these fees that come in. Those tax funds fill up the bucket of money from the bottom. And so as the total money that's in that bucket reaches that taper limit, the money off the top comes out. So what happens is the general fund actually gets squeezed. And that's where all the funds for a lot of, a lot of programs we've known for a number of years come from and transportation dollars, things like that. The cash fund dollars are actually protected by Tabor. So this billion dollar error, it's not even error, this billion dollar change in the tax forecast for 21, 21, 2022. Means that a billion dollars is coming out of that general fund out of the top. Which is going to have a significant impact on how these bills are implemented in the coming year, also on how what the general assembly is going to do next year. So keep all of that in mind as we're talking about all of these new programs and kind of how all this money is being spent is refunds. The first bill I want to talk about was Senate Bill 21, Senate Bill 21260, sustainability of the transportation system. This was an approximate $4 billion transportation infrastructure piece of legislation. I'm not going to go through all of it because a lot of it doesn't actually have to do with the town of Wellington. There are some really important things in there, including funding. And we're definitely going to be keeping a close eye on funding opportunities for the town of Wellington because some of those monies come directly to municipal municipalities. One of the big reasons I want to mention this bill, though, is it's one of the largest spending increases in the in this legislative session. A lot of that came out of those fees and funds, which, as I showed in the last slide, is why there's that billion dollars as we come out of the general fund. So I talk about that with taxes rather than transportation, simply because for us going forward. The tax and taper impacts are more than transportation impacts. We won't get funding out of that. We'll keep an eye on it. There's also a change, Senate Bill 293 is the property tax classification and assessment rates. This bill was really designed to counter an initiative that might be coming on the state ballot in this year. So when you asked earlier if there's any state initiative, state referendums coming in 2021, this is there is one in particular that we're keeping an eye out for. Which would reduce that assessment ratio due to the changes in Gallagher. So it would lower the residential property assessment ratio. So it in fact, lower residential tax taxes. Throwing the general fund and the state's budget into a bit of disarray. So Senate Bill 293 is some, I'll, I'm going to say it, it was some budget gimmickry gimmickry to try and blunt the impacts of that initiative. The way it's designed is it temporarily reduces assessment ratios on multifamily and lodging residential. So if this initiative that may or may not be on the ballot is on the ballot and it passes, it will have less of a negative impact on the state's budget.
So.
It's very complicated.
So another thing about Senate Bill 293, doesn't it also create additional property tax classifications? So currently, or as we've known it, we've just had residential and commercial. And now it breaks it down into like, like, as you mentioned.
There's the specific.
Lodging.
The big ones are multifamily residential and lodging commercial, but but one of the main reasons those new classifications were put into place. Is if this initiative that may or may not be on the ballot passes in 2021, it will only impact multifamily residential and lodging commercial. So it's, it does create new plus property classifications, but it's kind of the long term impact to that. I'm not totally sure of. It's specifically designed with this initiative in mind.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, it it, there is more to this. I'm trying to, yes, on all of these bills, there's a. 100 times more than I'm going to say in this, and that's why I would recommend you take a look at the. Colorado Municipal League booklet that I included, but yes, you're you're correct.
And do you know what the initiative number is coming down the line?
I don't know that has initiative number yet because it hasn't actually been approved for the ballot. So I'm not sure it does have.
Does it have a name or anything? They do they have they nicknamed it?
I don't. The deadline for it is August 2nd, and in fact, there are three potential ballot initiatives at the state level. And all of those must turn in their petitions by August 2nd. So at that time, we should have a real good idea if this is you're going to be on the state's ballot.
Okay.
So that's definitely something we'll be keeping an eye on.
So at the end of the day, it could lower residential assessment rates. So that's less property tax. But doesn't affect specific ownership tax, correct?
It, the initiative, if it passed, if this bill wasn't passed, would lower residential assessment ratios, which would lower property tax revenue. With this bill, there is a two year temporary deduction, temporary reduction in some assessment ratios. But it counteracts what the initiative would end up doing. So kind of this bill is to counteract an initiative. Both the initiative and this bill and the Gallagher amendment that really these are come from, we're a bit confusing.
Yes.
For legislators and most.
Thank you.
Next bills are Senate, House bills 1311 and 1312. These are major tax reform bills. I'm not going to go into the many, many, many. Parts of these, other than there's a major change in the business personal property tax exemption. I think currently that's, don't quote me on this number, is somewhere around $8,000. Under this bill, the business personal property tax exemption goes up to $50,000. So that's going to be a major change for a lot of small businesses. If there is an impact on municipal or local government revenue, that money is backfilled by the state. So even though small businesses will receive a tax benefit from the change, the tax exemption, there will not be a change due to that bill. Which is 1312 on Wellington's budget. That will be backfilled by the state. Again, the state's going to have its own budget issues. Now we see that there's a billion dollar refunds coming. Municipal preemption is kind of a broad category in that there's a weird collection of bills that I've grouped together here. Municipal preemption, you know, for many years, the state had a trend of taking powers away from municipalities and saying, we'll make sure that this is a. A state area of control. There's a couple of bills here that actually go slightly the other way, but with a catch, of course. So they remove the state preemption of municipal law and say that municipalities can legislate in these areas. But they have to hit sort of a minimum threshold. So you can pass laws about this, but you have to make states minimum requirements. Rent control is one area where no longer, you're no longer prohibited from having rent control in certain land use decisions. But that rent control has to be done with an option for other ways to reduce housing costs. So I'm not going to get into a lot of detail on that one. We'll be talking with Cody about it. Firearms legislation, local municipal, local governments can pass laws limiting firearms in a broad number of ways. Previously, they were prohibited from doing that, but they cannot be less restrictive than the state. They can be more restrictive from the state. So your initial question, trustee Gator, was do we as a town need to do anything to have the least restrictive laws in this area? And no. If you wanted to, you could pass laws making it more restrictive. Plastic bags, municipalities no longer prohibited from banning plastic bags. And this is a, there's certainly a local or home rule versus statutory town on what's been allowed previously. Under this, municipalities can legislate in the area of banning plastic bags. However, plastic bags will be banned statewide, beginning, I believe, in 2023. And this is going to cause some, cause some work for the town to make a decision on what we want to do. So the state law requires the plastic bag be banned and it requires that businesses charge at least 10 cents per plastic bag given. That 10 cents goes to the municipality. So the town of Wellington now has a cash fund from this ban on plastic bags. The town of Wellington must use to administer the plastic bag ban and enforce the plastic bag ban. So the state said, we can legislate in that area as a town. However, we're banning these. And as a town, it's your job to enforce it. So it doesn't cause some work and we're going to be looking closely at how this works. The last one on municipal preemption goes the opposite direction, and this is a bill that Cody is very interested in. And he and I will be talking about it extensively, House Bill 1222, which. Prohibits municipalities from using land use regulations to make regulations specific to family childcare homes that are not also applicable to residential properties. Meaning. Five channel, family childcare home could have 12 kids in there at a given time. And some municipalities might say, well, that if you have that many people in there, you might want fire control, you might need sprinklers, you might need other regulations. With under this bill, we cannot zone those any other way than residential. And we cannot have any land use regulations on them that don't apply to all other homes. So Cody and I will be talking extensively about this and how it might impact our towns.
Our rulings or does that also include the fire district? Because I know a lot of those rulings come from the fire district.
It's going to apply to.
Everybody.
It's going to apply to everybody.
We've already seen it.
Um, municipal liability is sort of the next broad area. These are some interesting laws that relate to how people can sue the town. I mean, and that's not the only thing these impact. These are, these are pretty important bills for a lot of things in terms of as a government, our job, I'm thinking about how can we get sued? So that's why I lumped them in this way. Senate Bills seventy three and eighty eight eliminated the statute of limitations for civil claims related to childhood sexual abuse. And the, those claims previously had a statute of limitations of somewhere around, I think, six years. By eliminating that, that those bills also eliminate governmental immunity for claims for childhood sexual abuse. And those bills offer retroactive liability for claims related to childhood sexual abuse. So interestingly, the town of Wellington has no governmental immunity on these claims. And if somebody brings a claim dating all the way back to nineteen sixty for a claim related to childhood sexual abuse by an employee, a volunteer, an official of the town of Wellington, we can be liable for that. So it's retroactive liability is very rare, but in this case, um they went ahead and did that. So to the best of our knowledge, there's no, no claims pending, but something definitely we're going to keep an eye on. Senate, that House Bill eleven oh eight, um, changed the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act to include gender identity and expression in the act itself. Um, and so what that's going to mean for the town of Wellington is we need to make sure our lives laws comply with that. So this will require a pretty extensive review of how our boards and commissions operate and how our town code looks. So something we'll be, we'll take a close look at. House Bill ten fifty one, um, again, changes the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act related to public services and programs, and this specifically relates to disabilities and websites. So under this bill, town websites need to comply with Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act and be accessible by individuals with disabilities. So that's just something that's we're going to work with Crystal and everybody who works on our website to make sure that it complies. So those are definitely good things. It increases accessibility to town resources. Um, on criminal justice, there is a laundry list of bills that I'm not listing here. Um, and I definitely, if you're interested in those, they're included in the criminal or Colorado Municipal League booklet that I included. They're relating to liability, police accountability, a lot of reforms. I'm not including them here because we contract our services through the Lammert County Sheriff, and I'm trying to focus on the few bills that really impact Wellington, specifically in our governance. And but Senate Bill twenty one two seventy one was a broad reclassification of misdemeanors. And the reason I bring this up is it will lead us to take a closer look at our municipal code and the general offenses there. This changed the felony misdemeanor line for theft and property issues to two thousand dollars. It's currently one thousand dollars. So it takes a lot of a lot of cases that might otherwise have been a felony and moves them down into misdemeanor land. Um, and also the max fine for a state misdemeanor is one thousand dollars. One of the reasons we'll take a close look at the municipal code is the maximum fine under Colorado law for violation of a municipal ordinance is two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. So per occurrence, that is the max. So if somebody were to receive a citation for theft in the amount of, say, nine hundred dollars in if, if that citation came to the municipal court, they could be fined twenty six hundred dollars. If it were in state court, it actually would be a class two misdemeanor because that line was dropped further. And I believe the max fine for it would end up being somewhere around seven hundred dollars. So there's, with this big change, we'll want to kind of take a look at those general offenses and, and, and see where where the town should be in relation to the rest of the, uh, rest of these sorts of state violations. And then
On that, excuse me, are we thinking more trying to bring our fines down to be more in line with that? Because I, I personally, people tend to avoid things that have higher fines.
I have no, I don't know at the moment. I, I think it's just, we, we need to take a closer look. This is a big change. Up until this point, a lot of those dividing lines between where felonies and misdemeanors are matched very cleanly with our municipal code and the, and the fines themselves matched. So we just need to, in light of this new bill, this major change in how these are assessed, we just need to see how the town's code looks. So that's something we'll be working on. I, I call this the miscellaneous bills, various things that might impact town of Wellington. They extended takeout and delivery of alcohol services until twenty twenty five. It began as a temporary measure, but they decided to keep that. Ranked choice voting will become an option for the town of Wellington beginning in twenty twenty three. Certain other municipalities cannot start doing it until, I believe, twenty twenty five. And so it's kind of phased in who can use this. And the reason for that is for municipalities that cross county lines and other things like that. So if ranked court choice voting were an option that you'd like to look at in the future, we could do that. We will be taking a close look at that, of course. Open meetings, House Bill ten fifty one there changed the requirement for disclosure of the final candidates for chief executive position searches. Essentially, if a lot of people apply, you don't have to tell the world who all those people were. Problem is, is people are applying for jobs as a town administrators, but they didn't necessarily want their current bosses to know about that. So then they wouldn't apply to those jobs because then they'd lose their current job, which makes a whole lot of sense when you're job hunting. Transparency organizations like Colorado Freedom of Information Coalition certainly doesn't like this because it means that a body like this could really just say, this is our final candidate for town administrator without disclosing how the process really went. So we'll be looking at how that plays into decisions, but it's a big change. House Bill ten twenty five is related to non substantive emails between elected officials. Of course, if three elected officials have an email about scheduling, is that an open meeting? Well, under this bill, under this, excuse me, new law, that is not a meeting. So there are certain things that are no longer considered meetings in terms of emails between the different groups. So we'll take a close look at how that works and give you a little bit of guidance. And so It's, uh, and, and it, especially with something like scheduling, oh, oops, I just sent this email to the wrong group, you know, to the wrong list. This, this is going to help clean up, making sure that the important emails are available and noticed. But some of these non substantive things don't require a problem or don't cause any problems. Senate Bill two thirty eight, I simply bring up the, uh, because of its definition of the Front Range Rail District, the district spans from New Mexico to the Wyoming border, largely includes municipalities and or areas within metropolitan planning organizations, which Wellington is not. But it does include any area north of the town of Fort Collins that's within five miles of I twenty five. So um, we, the town of Wellington is now in the Front Range Rail District. And it's going to kind of consider creating passenger rail from New Mexico up to Wyoming.
So is that a special district? Like, how is that, like, I'm just curious how that could impact our taxes?
Other than the fact that it's being allocated a good chunk of change from the state's general fund, it shouldn't have an impact on property tax. It is not a special district that is funded by property taxes.
Thank you.
Oops, did I skip a page? No, I didn't. I'm, I'm almost at the end here. What do you know? Um, and the last bill, of course, I wish I had told Judy about before she had started her presentation. And this is the Low Income Utility Payment Assistance Contributions Program, which creates a state authorized program for municipalities that have water utilities to provide an assistance program to their customers to pay the utilities. It's an opt in program, meaning that the town could choose to use this. And then on people's water bills, they could check a box that says, I want to donate to this program. And then those, that money goes into the, the town's program. And then it's, it's basically run by like the low inner, low income energy assistance program through Energy Colorado, I think, is the organization that runs it. I don't recall. However, it does state within the bill, municipalities can run their own program. So if what we do works great, what we start, what you're going to start this year potentially works great, that can be continued even though this, this exists. So it'll just create another option if we just use that.
Excuse me, um, what, what is the funding mechanism on that? Is it the local or is it state or?
It's local. And so if Wellington were to opt in, Wellington would opt in, and then it would give its customers the opportunity to opt in. So on every Wellington utility bill, there would be a, a checkbox where you could say, yeah, I, I want to, I want to give a buck. I want to round up, something like that. And then that money goes into a pot that is earmarked for the town of Wellington. So if Wellington is incredibly generous and everybody gives, that money is not going to end up going down to Bertha to help their customers. So um, it's, it's a, it's a pretty cool program, but it creates a, creates some options.
It's a good idea, but then we're going to start getting into having to go by state rules. So if they set some crazy state education standard people have to go through, so I like the idea. That's a great idea, but I like the idea of starting with our program because we can control some of that stuff.
The state's program would also have, be very similar to LEAP. And so the program that was discussed today might actually cover more individuals than this program would because it's income based. So, you know, what you talked about was simply a hardship based, which could really go
Yeah, yeah. All right, wow, we'll see.
So of five hundred bills that are five hundred new laws, that's what I narrowed it down to. At any time, if you have questions, please feel free to email me. Out of those five hundred, there's bound to be more that impact us.
Question for you, I mean, obviously, I mean, this is a great thing to know that these changes impact the town. Obviously, we had to look at some of our code. I mean, any idea, this is going to be an ongoing bit to stay in compliance. I mean, this is pretty heavy lift to, to do this.
It, it should be a it should be a thing that's done continuously. In twenty twenty one, five hundred new laws were passed, but in twenty twenty, which was one of the lowest years in recent memory, something like three hundred and fifteen, three hundred and fifty new laws were passed. And the year before that, it was four hundred and fifty. So this is, while it is a lot of new laws, every year there are probably five, six dozen new laws that dramatically impact municipal operations and need to you need to change the town code periodically to, to keep in compliance. So yes, this is going to be probably ongoing. We'll pick and choose the ones that we think we can address the, the quickest. You know, the criminal code is one hundred percent in compliance with all of, all of this. However, it might be a good time to take an opportunity, or not criminal code, the general offenses code. It might be a good opportunity to, to look at that in kind of its relation to town code. But before that, what I want to do is one of the other laws that's maybe a little more pressing in terms of making sure we're compliant with state law. But yeah, it, it's going to require a lot of work.
Did have a, and this isn't a Dan question, this is a Sergeant Reardon question, sorry. Um, I know there, there's been a ton of law enforcement stuff. We don't technically have our own police department, so we can't ask our police chief, but are we expecting there to be some negative impacts and availability for deputies and whatnot to serve the Wellington contract due to some of these changes that have come in on law enforcement out of this session?
Well, multiple questions, right?
Sorry.
Some of the impacts, I didn't, I haven't had a chance yet to see what all the changes were, like in classifications and things like that. One, one that I know they changed was like taking trespass to motor vehicle where you're breaking into cars and stealing stuff. It's no longer a felony. It's now a misdemeanor. So now we write you a ticket for it and send you on your way. So, yeah, that has some impact. We, we are still seeing, um, you know, people leaving, leaving the profession and that, uh, you know, people with, you know, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years, you know, so some of them are retirements, you know, you reach thirty years in any job, you're going to get retirements and that. But we've got people, you know, that are still young enough, they would probably still be in it, but they're wearing out on the constant barrage of, of bills, you know, additional, additional requirements that, that are being put on us as far as how we do things and, you know, removing, removing, you know, good faith protections and things like that, you know, from it, you know, to where, you know, people start worrying about losing their, losing their homes, losing their, you know, their livelihood, you know, their livelihood for making a mistake. And then, yeah, so so, yeah, it's, it's having an impact. So far, you know, right now, I think we have somewhere around ten vacancies in, in the patrol division for the sheriff's office. But we're, you know, managing to, you know, managing to fill those. In thirty years of doing it, we've never had all the spots full. Because as soon as you get all the spots full, somebody's spouse takes a job in another state or, you know, somebody says, you know what, I'm sixty seven years old and I'm, I think I'm going to retire now. Yeah, so.
Is there anything that we can do as a municipality just to, uh, one, show our appreciation to the squad, but also make it something that people want to still continue to serve up here? Or is there anything that we need to do?
Always, always a challenge for me, getting, getting deputies to want to, you know, continue working in the municipality. You know, just because they, a, a lot of people that get into it, you know, they get into it because they like to be active. They, and Wellington with its, you know, small town and low crime is a great place for those of us who, who like to interact with the community and take our time doing things. The, the more type A deputies burn out really quickly with, you know, with being confined. So I, I don't, I've never found quite what the answer to that is, you know, as far as, you know, how do you, how do you do that? Because, you know, the people that are attracted to the, to the sheriff's office aren't necessarily a lot, a lot of them that we get have come from smaller agencies. And they're seeing it as like a step up. And more freedom. And then we say, okay, now we're going to confine you to these ten square miles. But I just left Breckenridge. See. Okay. I, you know, so you only try to, try to do things. It's also challenging because we're social creatures. Yeah, most, most of the deputies like associating with the other deputies. And when they're assigned to a town, there's one, maybe two working at a time. So there's not much social interaction with the other, with the other deputies. It, it takes unique people. It takes, it takes Jim LaFerdees in that, you know, to really want to stay in, in the smaller towns. I've been here nine years, you know, so I'm, I'm one of those few that, that does it. Sergeant Anderson down in Bertha has been there for, yeah, since we assumed that contract. Supervisors, it's, it's a different gig for us than what it is for the deputies. What, what can you do? I don't know.
So if you can come up with anything, let us know.
We've got, we've got great equipment. You know, one of the things that Lammert County's always done well is, is we're not the highest paid agency, but we're probably one of the best equipped agencies. So that has, that has its draw. We don't have a lot of internal political issues that are found in other places, so people like deputies like coming to work here. And once they're here, absent all of the stuff that's going on nationally and that, you know, so once they're here, they very soon leave to go somewheres else. They don't, they don't see something else as better. Most of them don't want to go working awards on like Los Angeles.
Having lived fifty miles from said war zone in Los Angeles, I very much, I know your guys don't like it, but I appreciate the low crime and just the fact work you guys do here. So I want to make sure we're able to keep those deputies. Thanks.
Let us know if you need anything, sir. Thank you, Dan. It's coming. We've got that expansion coming up right now. He's got to stop in there and see it. See you, guys. We got anything else? Patty, Crystal? All right, everybody have a nice season.